Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, since this is a uh, more of a question and answer session, it's not a typical uh, board of selectmen meeting. We're not going to um, conduct any business other than reviewing the proposed charter revisions. Uh, I will go around and do public speak, but I would ask to limit what we are actually, you actually talk about in the charter questions because you're going to have your opportunity to speak to each one of the questions as we go through this. So, uh, I am going to start with Catherine McGoldy Lewis. Unmute. Catherine? Catherine, you got unmute.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that. Um, I have a couple of questions. They're primarily though for Carol Lee since she was vice chair of the Charter Committee. Um, and the first one actually is, when did the B O S actually decide a revision was needed? And what was the committee given as a charge?
Given a charge, we were told that we would get our charge from the public at our public hearing.
Oh. Okay, so at the public hearing then, what um, revisions or suggestions, requests did you receive from the public?
To fix the areas in charter that referenced May municipal elections. We were asked to look at select board versus Board of Selectmen. And we were asked to look for a town, look at forming a town council, changing the elected town clerk to appointed, um, giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to create ordinances and expediting the budget process. So we voted on the same day as the Rand budget.
And all that information's in the minutes.
Well, I have, my question is, I remember being there, but I don't remember anybody asking in the public or a town council.
No, I, I did in the middle, the meetings.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I'll get to that in the presentation.
Okay, and were these suggestions then submitted to the um, charter members? All the requests and the suggestions that we had all done at the meeting?
Well, Catherine, if you read that meeting, if you're at that meeting, that first meeting, we, we, after the public hearing, we met and you stayed and we all talked, all the members of the Board of the Charter Revision Commission talked about different things that we might want to bring forward to review.
Okay, yep, I was there. I remember. I couldn't remember all of it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm all, I'm all set.
Okay, Celeste Willard?
Uh, nothing at this time, Jeff. I'm just listening. If I have anything, I'll, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Steve Willard?
Nothing at this time, Jeff. Thank you.
Thanks. Dave Costainian? Okay, I think that's good. There's a phone number that's ends in five, four, seven, five. If you just state your name and let us know. Question?
Hi, it's, this is Leanne Hutchinson. Um, I have nothing right now.
Okay, thank you, Leanne. Uh, Elaine Bukar?
Um, hi, I just, I, I actually worked at our first day of early voting today. And I, um, and I have to say that the write-up that Carol Lee has a whole bunch of copies of that goes ahead and explains each question um, is wonderful. Um, and I do know that this is, this election, this voting process is going to take a lot longer than our usual voting process. So just because of all the questions that need to be read, read and responded to, um, people should take advantage of early voting and get down there and, and take your time and go ahead and vote. Um, because November 5th is going to be very slow process. But I just wanted to, to give a heads up and uh, certainly we will point people to go to the town hall if they're there while she's there, the town clerk is there, which I, which is great. Because it's the same hours that the town clerk's office is open. And if people have questions about the questions, they can go up to Carol and get that little write-up. But I just wanted to, to mention it. It, it's very successful today. Thanks.
Okay, and to, to piggyback on that, Elaine, I asked Eric to have uh, all of that information put up on the front of the homepage for the town website. So hopefully by tomorrow, we have that available online for anybody that wants to have access to that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, Bob Hamburger?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved with the commission. Um, I was, I was humbled to be chosen as chair. And uh, I just wanted to say that everybody who participated, you know, we had quite a task before us. Everybody brought individual talents and skills uh, to bear and, you know, we had a, a lot of work to do in a short time to do it. And I just wanted to uh, say that I think uh, given the constraints and given the challenge before us, everybody did uh, did a great job. I look forward to seeing how the voting goes on, on the different issues and uh, you know, I, I love hearing all the input that uh, everybody that showed up tonight uh, is, is gonna, is gonna contribute. So that's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. Carol Lee?
I'm all set. Thanks.
All right, Shannon Loudon?
Good evening. I, I guess the only thing I'll say is having voted today, um, I wish this meeting had been held earlier. And I'll save my questions for when we're talking about the proposed charter revisions. Thanks.
Okay. Um, Kubica, and, and I'm sorry, I don't have your full name.
Uh, sorry, sorry, I tend to just go by the one name because of work. Uh, I have no questions, uh, comments at this time. Um, I had seen the revised with markup. I would, can't find it right now on the, the website, but I did see it the other day and uh, I thought it was mostly seemed to be clearing up some of the ambiguity in the uh, language, legalese being legalese.
Thank you. Michael Sin-Sin-Six, I'm sorry, I'm not going to pronounce your, your name properly.
Sinkowitz. All set. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kath- uh, Kathleen Hutchinson? Or Catherine Hutchinson?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Biata?
Nothing at the moment. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Louise Goodwin?
I just want to say, uh, Elaine made a good point. I saw on the news, there's a lot of people standing in line waiting to vote. So I think it would be an excellent thing for people because we have so much time to do that, to go early and do that. Other than that, I'm all set. Thanks.
Leanne Hutchinson?
No, thanks.
Okay, Kimberly Person?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Abby Cole?
I'm here to listen today. Thank you.
All right, Stephen?
Stephen King, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Joanne Ebert?
Hi, just a quick comment. I'm sorry if it's already been mentioned. It probably was. We just need to do a revision to the front page and add the D for Andover. Um, thank you for that. And then I'd be remiss with my, with my eyes not to mention that in my job. Um, I did want to mention my, I will probably speak again later because I do want to listen, but I'm really not in favor of changing anything with the budget process. Um, I like the way our town currently handles it. I know that it takes a lot of time. I know that um, I, I hope I'm allowed to speak publicly. I mean, everybody else is, so I am a member of the Board of Finance, so I know how much time and effort it takes to, you know, pour through documents and, and the whole process and to speed that up and rush it really scares me, truthfully. So, and I like the process of the budget meetings, the town coming together. Um, so I'm not in favor of any of those changes and I want to say that. Thank you.
Sharon St. Rock?
I was also hoping to vote today, but I felt like I did not have enough information. So hopefully uh, this evening uh, the conversation will help uh, me make an informed choice when I do decide to vote. Thank you.
Philip Hovey?
Well, I've just come to uh, kind of lurk, listen to whatever he was saying. I've been away all summer and I'm trying to catch up with the um, with the ballot issues. Uh, so I'll be listening and I'll be working the polls uh, for early voting, kind of excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Catherine, uh, Kathleen Weigart? Okay, let's skip. Liz Lowcatch?
Hi, thank you. Uh, I'm just uh, listening for now. Thanks so much.
No problem. Uh, Kathleen? Okay, and the phone number that ends in two, three, four, five. Okay, so I'm going to go back to Kathleen. I don't know your last name.
Broshers.
Uh, Kathleen. So yeah, I gave you the five minutes. You got your public speak. Perfect.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Sarah Becker?
I'm sorry, Jeff. Can you repeat that? I just joined.
Um, we're, we're in the middle of public speak, so we're just giving you an opportunity to say anything you want before we get started.
I'm just calling in. Nope, that's okay, Jeff. All set.
All right, um, and again, the phone number that ends in um, two, three, four, five. Okay. Did I miss anyone? Anyone like to add anything? Okay. So uh, I, and I apologize for missing the D in my presentation. That's terrible. Joanne Ebert, thank you for following me out on that. I, I shouldn't have missed the D. So what I did was I prepared this presentation, but I also have a few other things for everyone to sit there and see. So this is the ballot that we're all going to end up at the polls with. The top of the ballots, it's there and goes through the party and the individuals. And what we're focusing on is the questions, the vote on the questions. So uh, I believe that this information was put up on the website as a sample so that if you can sit there and pull that up while uh, you're in this, we can sit there and, and deal with all of these. But in my presentation, I do read out each one of the questions. So I'm going to sit there and come back to the question and I'm going to get started. So uh, this goes into what Catherine was sitting there asking about the Charter Revision Commission. The Board of Selectmen voted on April 8th to establish a Charter Revision Commission. And then the Board of Selectmen appointed the members to the Charter Revision Commission on May 7th, uh, the individuals that uh, we had, I believe, thirteen, and we took a, a board of seven. So we had requested, the Board of Selectmen requested that final report to complete it by September 1st, 2024, to ensure that the questions could be on the ballot for November 5th. So the committee members that were selected were Robert Hamburger, who was uh, voted as chairperson for the committee, Carol Lee, who was voted the vice chair, uh, men of the committee, Jody Gross, who was voted in as the secretary for the committee, and then uh, members in um, without specific roles were Patricia Billings, Karen Mador, Jeff McGuire, and Adrian Mandeville. So the Charter Revision Commission had nine meetings. We had those meetings between May 22nd and July 17th of 2024. Um, the Charter Revision Commission discussed various uh, different things that we wanted to potentially see related to the charter. And our goal was to try to make the town government as efficient as possible. And there's been some conversation as to uh, why this was started and this Charter Revision Commission, I wanted to sit there and see this Charter Revision Commission because I wanted to see questions get on the ballot for a presidential election. And everyone is sitting there, there's a lot of conspiracy theories. Andover is pretty well known for conspiracy theories. And those conspiracy theories are that Jeff McGuire or other members, Bob Hamburger, were driving forth some issues that, that's not how the process worked. So uh, Jeff McGuire wanted to bring forth a town council form of government. And my simple reason for this was efficiency in that we have some things that the town should look to correct. So a town council form of government would consolidate the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. It would create a seven-member board because now with a town administrator, what we have is the town administrator preparing the budget for the town. And what I would like to see and what I think would be positive for the town of Andover is a seven-member board that would sit there and do the um, overarching uh, focus for what the town should be looking to do and also control the financial aspects of what's doing. So right now, what happens is because we now have a town administrator that prepares the budget, it then goes to the Board of Finance to be reviewed and to be implemented, and then it sits there and gets voted on by the public at the town budget meeting. What I wanted to sit there and see is because I've been on the Board of Selectmen for about ten years now and we have a five-member board and every time we come up for an election, all five members run. And what my belief is, is that we would be a much better organized group if we ran similar to the Board of Education or what now is the Board of Finance. And you have seven members, four members run in uh, odd years, three members run in, or excuse me, four members run in even years, three members run in odd years. And you have a consistency of the board and it's not a total redo because the, the second election I ran, I was the only member of the Board of Selectmen that continued over. Uh, this last election, all five members continued and uh, or, or ran. Uh, they did not continue, but we, they ran. So that was my idea. And what I did was I brought that up to the board, the Charter Revision Commission, and it was a little bit too much for everybody to understand and to want to take on for what we were challenged with. And, and honestly, I was okay with that because what I wanted is to bring it forward to the community because I do believe it's in the best interest of the community. So that was Jeff McGuire's reason for the Charter Revision Commission, what I wanted to present. Then what we ended up doing is we ended up taking all of the ideas that were out there of things that could be done to make town government more efficient. And we all evaluated them. So Bob Hamburger was the chairperson, Carol Lee was the vice chairperson. We went through each of the issues that were brought up and each of the members of the, the board, the Charter Revision Commission, were given a topic to review and to come back to the board and discuss. And we all went through each thing. So not everyone's uh, item ended up being brought into the revisions that we made, but it was a very good board and honestly, it was, it was a very good board. And everybody participated and everybody sat there and brought their ideas forth and everybody voted on each of the items that we finally brought into the draft that went to the, the Board of Select. So that's related to the Charter Revision Commission. And, and listen, anybody want to ask a question? Please raise your hand. Unmute yourself. This is a question and answer. This is not a uh, not, I, I want everybody to ask their questions so that we know what we're after. So these are the ballot questions that are out there. If you sit there and you go through your ballot question, ballot question one is shall the Constitution of the State of Connecticut be amended to permit general assembly to allow each voter to vote by absentee ballot? This question is related to the Connecticut Constitution, not the, the Andover Charter. And what it's doing is currently we have um, rules that require you to say that you're either out of town or you have a reason to get an absentee ballot. What the state is doing now is and what they're trying to get the, the constitution changed to is that there's no reason required for any vote voter to vote by absentee ballot. That's question one. It's a yes or no question. You vote whichever way you choose to on that item. That's not related to the Andover Charter. It's the State of Connecticut. It's on every ballot within the State of Connecticut. Okay, question number two. Uh, ballot question two, shall the town charter be revised to require regular town elections in November of odd years instead of in May?
Jeff, real quick, Louise had her hand up for the first ballot question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Louise. Go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Um, actually, it's for all the questions. I just want ask and have everybody hear. Um, did, are all these revisions, were they all kind of reviewed by the town attorney?
Yes.
Okay, and approved them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the questions, the, the, the questions need to go to the Secretary of State's office. And they're also reviewed by the State of Connecticut to make sure that the questions are, are written correctly for the ballot.
For the ballot. Okay. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yep. Okay, question two relates to voting. Uh, the town of Andover, um, since the initial charter was written, voted in the month of May of odd years. The local elections were, were May. This is to move that in the charter to November. We currently vote in November because of state statute and law passed by the State of Connecticut. We're just trying to change the town charter to sit there and correspond with that, to sit there and say we're going to vote in November as opposed to May. Any questions related to that, that item?
Uh, Philip Hovey has his hand up?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, the question is, the uh, so this is basically driven by the state rather than a choice by um, uh, the town?
Uh, it is, the state is requiring November elections unless we make a decision to vote in May, which not anyone on the Charter Revision Commission was looking to continue May elections.
Yeah, we, we missed that because they, the Secretary of the State's Office told the towns five remaining May towns, if they wanted to keep elections in May, we would have to have a town meeting and allow the people in the town to vote to keep the election in May. And if the town failed to hold that special town meeting by December 31 of 2022, we would automatically go to November elections in 2020.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Shannon Loudon also has her hand up.
Thanks. Um, I'm just curious, given that it's now required by state statute, what happens if we vote against it as a town? Um, then we would have a charter that doesn't comply with state statute. Thanks.
So Shannon, I guess you're saying vote yes for this because it makes sense to change our charter.
I'm saying what happens if we go against state statute, Jeff?
Okay.
We can't. It's just we wouldn't be in compliance with what, with the way we're doing business, right?
There, there's a bunch of sorry, Carol, go ahead. There's a bunch of these questions that are really just simple logistical questions that were just the Charter Revision Commission was trying to just get changed. And this is one of so. Okay, Catherine?
I'm sorry, real quickly though, if it already went into effect, is this question even a worthwhile question? Like Shannon just said, even if we don't vote, we've, it's already gone into effect that now we have November elections because we never asked the town to vote on it.
Well, what we're trying to do is get the charter in alignment with the state statutes. So it's just a technical issue of trying to change that. You could leave it and vote no, and then we're still going to vote November. So we're just trying to get the charter to match up everything.
So, okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, ballot question three, shall the town charter be revised to delete the rule that resignation of any member of any board or similar body be accepted by the Board of Selectmen? So this is really just a what's the difference if the Board of Selectmen accepts a resignation? If someone resigns, they resign. It doesn't need to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Sec- Selectmen is made aware of the resignation and then we move through the process of what we need to do to potentially replace that individual or the board that is involved will go through and, and work to replace that individual. But to sit there and say in the charter that the Board of Selectmen needs to accept the resignation, to me is irrelevant. Okay.
Yeah, but Stephen has his hand up?
My only question would be whether, would there be any reference to timing regarding that? Or is that based on uh, the minutes and, and uh, how is that uh, uh, because there's, there are certain things that are timed based, based upon a resignation and uh, requests for uh, replacements?
Someone submitting a resignation submits the resignation to the town clerk and to the chairperson of the board. And then the timing related to the replacement of that individual starts from really when the town clerk gets it and it submits it back to the members.
Joanne Hebert also has her hand up?
Just a follow-up to what Stephen said too. I, I totally understand why this would be easier and why we would want to enact this just to take away the formality, but it does it, it just alerts the town when it comes up at a Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, and you're, you accept it. It just, you know, people that take time to watch the meetings and everything. It just makes it more public in case people aren't aware. So that would be my only thought on that.
Well, currently in our, in the Board of Selectmen minutes, every month, we have a resignation line item. So any resignations are listed there. I think it's just a technical issue. Are we accepting the resignation or receiving notification of the that, that, it's just terminology. So the question is acceptance.
Okay.
In reality, i- if Joanne, if I resigned as the, you know, from the Board of Selectmen, is the Board of Selectmen going to accept my resignation or receive my resignation and then move forward to make the appropriate uh, steps to replace me? That would be the issue.
Thanks, yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Ballot question four, shall the town charter be revised to require that any Charter Revision Commission established after a mandatory Board of Selectmen review be given at least six months to submit their draft report to the board? This is just a saying, th- this was based upon uh, members of the Charter Revision Commission uh, identifying that they were being um, put under a time crunch to sit there and get this back for September. It was a request that was made during the course of the meetings that there should be additional time granted to future Charter Revision Commissions. And it was something that the Charter Revision Commission sat there and thought that we should try to get changed. So it's basically any other future Board of Selectmen that requests a Charter Revision Commission has to provide them with a minimum of six months to complete their work. They could do their work in less time, but they're given a minimum of six months. So the timing of these uh, charter revisions uh, needs to be evaluated by future Board of Selectmen's or if we, if this Board of Selectmen determines they want to sit there and do it again, uh, the next Charter Revision Commission would be given six months to complete their task. Any questions? Okay. Ballot question five. Shall the town charter be revised to permit the Director of Health or Animal Control Officer position to be filled by an entity as well as an individual person? Um, the current charter calls for employees to fill these positions. We technically are utilizing uh, services outside of that to perform those tasks. So right now for the Director of Health, that is performed by Eastern Health, uh, Eastern Highlands Health District. And so we're trying to just revise the charter so it allows for a subcontractor or uh, another company to perform those tasks without having it to be an individual because that's what's called out or an employee. That's what's called out for currently in the charter. Any questions on that item? Mr. Hovey?
Um, again, is that the only two um, organizations um, were organizations, um or departments um that can, that can get that? Um, be an entity, or are there other in the town um uh in the town departments um who might be um fulfilled with an entity?
Those are the two that are called out for in the charter that we identified. There are, you know, right now uh we sit there and contract out services to uh the building department. And I'm trying to think of any other Eric that we actually outsourced that are not employees.
Uh Youth Services Bureau would be one.
That's through, through the
Through AHM?
AHM, I was trying to say, I was gonna say RAM, but it's AHM, yeah?
Correct.
Who else do we use? Anybody else?
Uh we're contracting out our IT services through the town of South Windsor. Um, uh as you already talked about, the Animal Control Officer is, we are using the Northeast Council of Governments Animal Control Services to cover the town of Andover. Um, you know, and as employees leave and are replaced, we always look at the potential for savings using shared services as opposed to a discrete employee.
So Mr. Hovey?
Those, those ones though Eric, that you mentioned are not part of section seven oh two for the administrative. The only ones are the Town Assessor, Building Official, Municipal Agent, Director of Health, Animal Control Officer, Tree Warden, Sanitarian Wetlands, zoning enforcement, Treasurer, Town Attorney, Town Engineer, and Police Service, uh Public Works and Tax Collector. So the only ones that we're outsourcing right now is building to Bolton, Eastern Highlands Health District, and MECOG for Animal Control. BAHM and the other ones you mentioned are not identified in our charter.
So Carol, just let me ask you a question, is the Town Attorney identified as an employee within the charter?
The Town Attorney is identified as an administrative position. And he's identified as you're appoint, you appoint him and you do, you do.
Okay, but the te- the terminology for the Director of Health and the Animal Control Officer within the current charter was to have them be an employee?
Right, so it says a sanitarian, um and then Director of Health. So before, we used to have natural doctor that was the Director of Health, and then the Town Santist.
Okay.
When the charter was originally written.
Okay, so this was, this is trying to change some wording on those two positions because they call out employees specifically. And we do not, um, they're not full-time positions and they're not positions that the town would be financially wanting to employ someone for. So that's why we outsource those, and we're just trying to change some terminology within the charter.
So that's just aligning these two uh positions with what we're already doing with other positions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on ballot question five?
And just as a side note, even if ballot question five fails, uh the state, the state this year uh passed a series of measures that make it easier for towns to collaborate with each other. So you would still be able to share services with another municipality or a cog, um regardless of what the town's charter says about an individual position under current state law, as I understand.
Okay, understood. Any other questions on ballot question five? Okay. Well, back up, Leanne Hutchinson.
Yes, um I assume that just the question itself is gonna be on the ballot and not the explanatory paragraph.
That's correct.
My question is, I read the top where it says as well as, that I would read that to imply that you can have an individual and an entity doing the same thing, because it doesn't say an individual or an entity.
That's correct.
So would it be, is the intent of it to have an individual or an entity as opposed to like, for example, the Animal Control Division um position, having the um, is it NECOG that we use now? MECOG?
Correct.
Could we have them and still have somebody who's an Andover resident or a town employee? Could we have both, or is this meant to say you could have one or the other?
You would only wanna have one or the other because it's costing us too much money to have both. So you're either giving the town the opportunity and the authority to sit there and have either an employee on the books if it's financially prudent, or to sit there and outsource it to a third party.
Okay, well that makes sense. I just, I read it several times in the way I would read it again because of the wording as well as, I personally would read it that you might end up with one of each, an individual, again, a resident or a town employee already, or another entity, that's just the way I read it.
Understood.
Thank you.
We would never, you would never wanna do that, just to sit there and, it's a financial issue, but it's giving flexibility to the town to sit there and pick the best way to sit there and fill those positions.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else? Okay. Ballot question six. Shall the town charter be revised so that starting in November of twenty twenty-seven, instead of being elected, the town clerk will be appointed by the Board of Selectmen? That is how the question is written, so uh before I get to you Diane, or Diane is joining. The uh, the town clerk's office is the information center of the town, and to be really honest, Carol Lee has done an exceptional job. And Carol, I didn't ask you this at, uh last Friday, how many years have you been, have you filled the town clerk's position?
Since two thousand three, I've, I've been the town clerk, but I started in nineteen almost twenty.
So you were the Assistant Town Clerk for the years in the beginning?
Correct.
Okay, so you know, basically Ter- Carol's office does a, a significant amount of work within the community. And as everybody on this call understands, Carol Lee has done a tremendous job. No one is, this is not about Carol Lee, this is not about trying to do something that is going to be a negative. This is where the, the town charter, we, we changed the first selectman from the, the CEO of the town to the town administrator. And why did we do that back in, you know, I guess it's about six years ago now, why did we do that? We did that because you can never guarantee who you're going to elect into a position, a professional position such as the first selectman, and to guarantee that they can do the job in an appropriate fashion, so um we as a town all voted to sit there and move the first selectman and, you know, basically appoint a town administrator. And from my perspective, that is the best thing that's happened to this town since I've been involved. Um, it has professionalized the position and has allowed us to do things that we would never have done with a part-time individual as the first selectman. So that is what the intention of this change is to do. So the town clerk's job is, is not a simple job, and this issue is not related to Carol, it's related to the next individual that comes in and runs because the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee would each select an individual who lives in the town of Andover to run for the town clerk's position, and that individual may have never worked in the town clerk's office. That individual may not have any of the training related to the town clerk's job, and they would be voted in based upon the results of that election. So that is where this is coming from. This is trying to move to a position where we can select somebody potentially from out of town. We could ex, we could appoint the Assistant Town Clerk currently, and that individual would then become the town clerk and an employee of the town. And the one thing that everybody needs to understand is the Board of Selectmen does not appoint, does not just arbitrarily appoint anyone to any position. The Board of Selectmen would sit there and identify that we have a job to fill. The uh, a hiring committee would be selected, one member of the Board of the Selectmen would be on that, one member of the Board of Finance would be on that. Uh, town clerks from other towns would be on that, and they would evaluate all the resumes received. They would conduct interviews and they would come back to the Board of Selectmen and make a recommendation as to who would be the appropriate candidate for that position. That's how every position within the town of Andover is filled. Jeff McGuire, Jeff Murray, Scott Person, Anne Creme, we don't sit there and just say we were going to point X, that's not how it works, there's a process, and you go through that process for every position that you would want to fill. That's how the town administrator is filled, and that's even how uh all of the positions are filled. It's a hiring committee, recommendation made, and then appointment made. It's not, but it's been stated out there that we're going to just appoint whoever we want, that's not how it works. Catherine Mabaldi Lewis, uh wait a second, yeah, you were up first, I know I saw this.
I was. Well, mine's real quick.
Yeah.
Um, it's, I've said this before, I, there are pros and cons to both. And um, and I understand pros and cons to both, and I don't have a, I'm not against it, however, I think that it should be stated somewhere that if the Board of Selectmen is going to appoint, then that role can change every four years. I think that's something people should know. I don't, it's not against the appointment, it's just that that's a, that's a big thing, that every four years you might have somebody new in there, that's all.
Well, that's the same thing you would have in an election, and the goal would not to do that, and tha- that's, you know, the reason Carol Lee's been in that position for twenty-one years. Nobody wants to change that position, but eventually Carol Lee is going to retire.
It has nothing to do with Carol Lee.
No, it has nothing to do with Carol Lee, but it does, Carol Lee's gonna wanna retire. And then at that election, we're gonna vote on somebody that potentially has no qualifications.
Well, I would hope not, but okay.
Uh I don't see how, I don't see any way around not voting on somebody that doesn't. The only way to sit there and do it is if someone moved into town, and because they have to be a town resident to run in our election, they'd have to move into town and they would have to sit there and want the position, and then they'd have, I mean, I, I don't see it happening. I mean, it would be different if we could sit there and vote for the Assistant Town Clerk and she wanted to fill the role, but I, I don't believe Carol, your assistant, lives in town currently.
She doesn't.
She does not, so she wouldn't qualify, so.
Is it an, I'm sorry, can I just clarify, is that an indefinite position then, or does it automatically get looked at again every, every four years? I mean, you hired and then you're hired, or?
You're hired and hired, you, you know, you, you'd have to, you, you know, just like any position within the town, you'd have to sit there and you have to, you have to get moved for cause. I mean, it's not as if
Okay.
we can sit there and as a Board of Selectmen just make a change because we're the Board of Selectmen, um you know, it, that, this is where everybody sits there and thinks different things. The Board of Selectmen just doesn't wave a wand and say we're gonna make changes. We don't wanna make changes. I, Catherine, I would never wanna make a change to the town clerk if, if I, we didn't have to. Um, it's just a question of, are we as a community wanting to vote on someone that doesn't? And I'm, I'm just telling you, I could, you can almost sit there and see, it would never be someone with qualifications, but we're gonna have to vote on a town clerk. So the next election, the Carol Lee doesn't run, cause Carol Lee's running, Carol Lee's winning. She gets the most votes out of anyone in town, she's on both party lines. It doesn't matter, no one's gonna run against Carol Lee. Now, I don't think the Republican Town Committee or the Democratic Town Committee have ever put anyone up against Carol Lee since she's won the first election. Carol, has anyone run against you since you won your first election?
No.
No, okay, and rightfully so, we shouldn't. So what's the, I, I guess my question to the community and everybody else is, this is just an issue of down the road, how we're, we're sitting here and looking at this. And even if this question loses, it's gonna come back up again because we're gonna face it some, sometime. So we're just trying to get ahead of this, and this was an issue that we addressed. Um, it's an issue that's brought up in a lot of other towns, it's issues that, it's an issue that's failed in other towns, it's an issue that continued to get brought up, but like I said, eventually Carol Lee is gonna decide she's not running. And that's gonna put the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee in a position to find someone that's, that wants to run for town clerk, and why are they gonna run? They're gonna run because it's a job, and they're gonna get paid X amount of money. They're not gonna be qualified, and then the community is gonna have an issue that we're gonna sit there and potentially suffer. Or we could sit there and make it a, an employee position, an appointed position, and the individual could sit there and be from out of town. We could select the Assistant Town Clerk to fill that spot, and that's all this is about. Any other questions on this? Uh Elaine Buchard?
Um, yeah, I just, I, 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 I understand the confusion that Catherine has because it has been verbalized that every four years, maybe, you know, you'd relook at the town clerk position, but in the question and in the explanation of the question, there is no mention of doing this every four years. It's kind of a, we are hiring, and as things, you know, go on with people who are working for the town, you know, if they leave or if they are not doing a great job and we need to remove them, or they're great and we just wanna keep them, that's all there, the flexibility is all there. But I know verbally it was mentioned every four years, but it's nowhere in this statement.
Well, I believe that what you're stating is that in the, in the information, they're appointed every four years, it's not, I mean, if a Board of Selectmen is doing their job, they're not gonna, they're not going to determine they need to appoint someone to replace someone doing a good job, and, and I, and I really, and I would sit there and I would go back, I don't even think that's legal, that you, you'd have to go for cause on someone. It's not that simple, and, and if I was ever on the Board of Selectmen, uh you know, in a, in the position that the, the four years came up, if the individual is doing a good job, the individual is getting reappointed.
Right, but nowhere in the, does it say there's going, that there's going to be a review every four years?
It does in the charter, Elaine, the proposed draft of the charter.
Oh, it does, oh, okay, cause the question, so, mention that.
Mailer that went out, the Office of the Town Clerk shall have permanent status pursuant to the options set forth in General Statute nine dash one eighty-five. Beginning with the November second twenty twenty-seven election, Town Clerk shall no longer be elected rather on or after November sixteen twenty twenty-seven, and every four years thereafter, Board of Selectmen most recently elected in the November municipal election shall on or after two weeks following the date of their election by a minimum of three votes, appoint a qualified person to be Town Clerk to work, not to pass.
Okay, so that's where the four years is coming from. I'm just saying, if you're coming in and the first time you're exposed to this question and this explanation, you don't see anything about that four-year relook, that's all, nah.
Uh were there other individuals that had questions related to this?
Uh, yeah, um, this is Phil Hovey. Uh I couldn't quite make out what Carol Lee was saying, there's a garbling in um my reception, but my understanding then is um once appointed um throughout the hiring process, um the, the uh, this position then has, is, goes through basically a job evaluation every four years, um is that correct? And then also, is there something in the um, uh the clerk's um contractor or letter of agreement that protects him or her? Does the question make sense?
It, it does, but I don't necessarily know that there's protections in a contract because we've never drafted the contract. I mean, this, this would go into effect three years from now. We would sit there and have to work that out with the town attorney. Um, but the, the issue that, that Carol raises is that the verbiage within the charter is that it's reappointed every four years. And the concern from the public, which I totally get, and is that every new Board of Selectmen is going to potentially be able to change the town clerk, which would be foolish, but that's what could happen. So, um, you know, there's, there's, um, that's actually something that actually I believe probably needs to be addressed. We might have to call a new Charter Revision Commission because, uh, I could understand the concern over it. I don't think that the intent was to be negative like that, but I could understand where people are, would be concerned about that. Um, I just know as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not changing the town clerk if they're doing a good job and there's not an issue. And I don't think the town clerk, I think if the town clerk was having an issue and we're having an issue with the town clerk and legally we could do it, we wouldn't wait till the four years were up. We would do it beforehand. That would be me. But I, I do understand the concern over that, um, how it is stated within the text of the Charter Revision. So I can only tell you that the, the thought of doing this is, is appropriate in that we do need to sit there as a community and move to this, to sit there and be able to have that position filled by a qualified individual in the future.
So I understand the benefit of having a hiring process for, uh, the candidate, uh, when, when a vacancy happens. Um, I'm just wondering if like in four years, if you have a, a vindictive Board of Selectmen or select people, just, you know, out of the air saying, okay, time to get rid of this person because we don't like her or him. That's the only concern about, because you're changing essentially from a high, from a, from a, an elected office to a hired office. And then there doesn't appear to be any wording for, uh, protection. Or how the review, uh, job review happens and, you know, how we replace the object of, um, of, of running it again in four years.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's all.
Uh, Liz Lowketch.
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering if you could, I, I know you, you mentioned it and it kind of went over too fast for my brain, how the, the interview process would work and who the quote unquote interview committee would be. Is that something that would be different every year or how would that be chosen?
Well, it changes by position. Normally what would occur is a member of the Board of Selectmen would be appointed to the interview committee. We would request a member of the Board of Finance to be in the, on the committee. We would then move out and we would probably request for the town administrator to be on that committee. And then we would go out and normally you deal with a current town clerk. So when we just interviewed for the, uh, the director of the community center, we brought in the, uh, director of, uh, Coventry's Community Center. And she came in and was on the interview committee. And so that's, that's normally how the process will work. So you'll sit there and you can have four, five, you can have upwards of seven people if you chose to on that interview committee. And then you just evaluate the resumes and you, you allow the candidates to come in and you interview them. And we went through the process and we graded each of the individuals for this senior committee. And then we made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen appointed the individual. So that's, that's normally how the process works. Who's on that committee might differ each time in each position. Any other questions, Liz?
Um, I mean, thoughts, but questions, no, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Stephen King?
Yeah, um, you touched upon some concerns that I had. Um, obviously it would make sense to ensure that you have somebody with appropriate credentials for the position. However, that individual is currently elected by the people as are the Board of Selectmen. And you could make the same argument of the Board of Selectmen that you're trying to make for, uh, the town clerk. Uh, and the town clerk essentially becomes a, a job at the will of the Board of Selectmen. I understand you're going to have committees making recommendations, but the bottom line is the Board of Selectmen decide whether or not to hire that individual. Uh, the people elect the Board of Selectmen, I think the people should elect the town clerk.
Understood, and that's why Stephen, we went and we changed the first selectman from being the chief executive officer of the town to basically being the chairman of the board. So we have an individual that's in the position and has professionalized the position. So, uh, that's the same logic that had, was a being, is being applied here and was being applied by the Charter Revision Commission. Was Stephen finished?
I was just going to mention that, you know, just argument that, uh, um, that, uh, an individual, um, make sure you vet the individual properly at the board level. I think that it's appro, it's just as appropriate to vet them, uh, by the general public, the population of Andover. Um, uh, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but those same people elect the Board of Selectmen. Why shouldn't those people be, have, have the opportunity to, to elect, uh, the town clerk?
Because there's not the technical requirement, uh, s- Board of Selectmen as there is for the town clerk. So the Board of Selectmen is, uh, really, the current Board of Selectmen, what we are is we're the Board of Directors of the town. We sit there and advise the chief executive officer of the town, the town administrator as to what we were choosing to do. When we're electing a town clerk, we're electing someone that is, that is dealing with all of the vital records of the community, has to follow all of the legal requirements of the state as they file and record all of the documents. Uh, it's not the same. It, it's just not the same. You're not electing, um, you're not electing a, a selectman. Listen, Stephen, we've had, we've had select people who were terrible. And it didn't matter because they're, they're not, they're not impacting transactional information. They're not doing something. And we've had first selectmen that we voted for before we made this change that were terrible. And they impacted the town negatively. And that's the truth. That's why we went to a town administrator. That's why, you know, I wanted to sit there and see a town administrator because the, the issue with the selectman and especially the first selectman is he's, he's part-time and then he's getting paid, um, you know, in, in the case when we first started this, you know, the, the, the first selectman was really pocketing a hundred thousand dollars between his salary and his benefits. And you cannot qualify that. I might have come in and done a great job. I might not come in and done a terrible job, but that's not what my role is anymore. That's not what the first selectman's role is anymore. The town clerk is, is a position that has technical requirements that we're extremely lucky to have Carol Lee. But that, when the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee selects someone to run, they're not going to go through the process of qualifying somebody because you're not going to have anybody that you can qualify. I'm just flat out telling you, I don't see that anyone is going to be running for that office that has gone through the training and the requirements to sit there and be a town clerk.
I recognize your concerns, but again, I just, I just feel it, it should be a vote of the people. Thank you.
Understood. Bob Hamburger.
Um, I just wanted to take a step back and point out for the remainder of the public that's appearing here, just to foresee the kind of questions that they might be asking, that there's three pieces of information here that can be looked at. We have the, the ballot questions themselves, which are the most condensed, reduced, summarized, uh, statement of, of the issues. And they had to be summarized like that in order to fit on the ballot. We have the presentation that you've got online here and which, um, they're handing out at, at the polling place at Town Hall, which amplifies on these issues and gives some background. But if people want to see the full detail of what's happening to the charter, that is available on the town's website. If they were to go to government and then appointed commissions, the Charter Review Commission, twenty twenty-four, they can see the full text of what's being deleted and what's being added. It's color coded. And that's really, some of the, the questions that are being asked right now could, uh, could be avoided if people just went and, and looked at, at, uh, the in-depth issue, what's actually happening to the charter. So that, that's point number one. I just wanted to point out now, Jeff, you mentioned we may have to come back when it comes to the, um, the question of the, um, the town clerk. I'll just throw out there for everybody's, uh, listening pleasure and, and thought that right now we have the, the reappointment, uh, term being stated as lining up with the election of the Board of Selectmen. Something that can be suggested and considered by a future Charter Review Commission is to stagger that by two years. So that the Board of Selectmen has to come in, they have to be seated, they have to be in the position for two years before they could take a look at the, uh, the town clerk. I think that in and of itself might lend some stability to the entire process. And Jeff, I, I see you, I see you nodding and thinking, you want to, you want to jump in and say something here?
Well, I, I can, I, I agree with you that on that point, the two years staggering, but we don't even need to reappoint the individual. You know, we don't need to say, we didn't need to say that. I, I, in, in, in essence, you know, thinking about it, why did we sit there and say we were going to reappoint the town clerk? The town clerk has a position until there's a, an issue of concern or a reason for, um, for potential termination. And then you sit there and you go through the process of rehiring. But it's usually with cause. It's usually, it's got to be with cause. I, I don't see any other way of doing it with, then without cause. So maybe what we did, Bob, is we added some complexity to this that we didn't need to add. And we could have just sat there and said it was, uh, you know, uh, it was an, it's an appointed position and it'd be just like any, any other employee. Um, you do an evaluation, it's good or bad, you know, and you, and you move on, so.
I believe we were reflecting some of the language that's in place for Eric, for the town administrator. So we were trying to, to keep these positions as parallel as possible in, in the language that, that we employed. So if I, if I recall our meetings, that was the rationale behind this. Um, so a third thing that I wanted to bring up, you've mentioned a number of times, the Board of Selectmen has a, a distinct, uh, well delineated process for a number of different procedures for, for how we hire, how, how you impanel a hiring committee. Uh, let me ask, are these things documented anywhere? Is there a Board of Selectmen operating manual, you know, for lack of a better term? Um, and, and if not, maybe this is another thing that the Board of Selectmen should consider moving forward so that there is again continuity in how things are done and transparency it, within the process.
I would tell you the answer to that is no. And we should sit there and get with the town administrator and get those things in place.
Okay, that's all I've got right now.
No problem. Steve Willard?
Yeah, Jeff, I, I don't know. I think I can summarize this in one sentence. This changes it from just ha, being able to choose a clerk from the voters, the electorates in town, in town, to opening it up to anybody could be, could be in this position. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Joan Eber?
I'll be very brief too, Jeff. Um, I, I see this as a very important position in town and, and agree with a lot of the points you're bringing forth as far as, you know, we need, we need someone that, um, is capable of handling all the important things that Carol has handled for so long, um, and looking to the future. My one scare was, you know, the four-year thing. You've kind of amended that. Um, and then I just wanted to say for the people that are here, I have had the privilege of sitting on an interview committee with the town. Um, that's something that I do in my job and it was very, very professional. We all took it very seriously. We did a lot of the things that Jeff said, um, as far as going through applications. Um, you know, really looking for qualified people. Um, and they did do a good job. Um, the only thing that would have scared me before this was the four-year term and someone being afraid to lose their, their job. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, uh, on ballot question six? Okay. So before I move on to a ballot question, seven, eight, nine, ten, those are all related to the budget. And they're all related to the town meeting. So I want to go through and I want to give everybody a little bit of historical perspective as to why these were being considered and what we thought. So the town of Andover was, uh, chartered in eighteen forty-eight, eighteen forty-eight, eighteen forty-eight. Says it right there on the logo. Thank you, Eric, eighteen forty-eight. I went to the town clerk's office because the town clerk keeps all of our vital records and keeps all the minutes of everything that's previously occurred within the town as best they can. So I went backwards and I looked at voting records from nineteen hundred, nineteen twenty-five and nineteen fifty. And I'd be really honest, I loved how they did it back in nineteen hundred, nineteen twenty-five, nineteen fifty. They basically put out there that the way they put it on their, their nice written script documents was, these are the voters we have on the list. These are the voters that cast ballots. So in nineteen hundred, there were a hundred registered voters in the town of And, Andover. Seventy-nine cast ballots, seventy-nine percentage, seventy-nine percent voting. That's awesome. Nineteen twenty-five, the population increased by ninety-eight individuals or registered voters by ninety-eight individuals. A hundred and sixty-three of them cast ballots, eighty-two point three two percent. In nineteen fifty, you can see after World War Two, we had an explosion in population. There was three hun, five hundred and thirty-nine, uh, registered voters in town. Four hundred and sixty-nine of them went to the polls and voted that year, eighty-seven point zero one percent. So that, that's Andover historical voting when they were doing the town meeting and you had a hundred people that lived in town and they, they came and they voted. So. I want you to sit there and go through our town budget meeting attendance over the last five years. Um, I'll start at the bottom and work my way up. In, in two thousand nineteen, we had twenty-two hundred and thirty-five voters, seventy-two, uh, people attended the town meeting. In twenty twenty, COVID, we did not have a town meeting. In twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-two hundred and ninety-six people, seventy-one people showed up to vote, three point zero nine percent. In twenty twenty-two, we had two budget votes. The first was May fourth, twenty-three thirty, eighty people attended the town meeting. Three point four three percent. May twenty twenty-second, the second time the budget went before the town meeting, the same number of registered voters, ninety-one people showed up, three point nine one percent. And the budget passed to move to referendum. In May of twenty twenty-three, twenty-three hundred and sixty-seven registered voters, seventy-eight made it to the town meeting, three point three percent. In May of twenty twenty-four, two thousand three hundred and eighty-six voters, forty-two registered voters came to attend the town meeting. Let me tell you one thing about this. Of those forty-two people that came to vote at the town meeting, a minimum of twelve of them were elected officials. So there were thirty people from the public that came to our town meeting to move the budget to referendum. Just so everybody understands and is aware of what's going on. Now I want to go to the reason why these votes are being dealt with. We have a twelve million dollar budget. Give or take, and I'm just rounding numbers so everybody can be aware. The RAM budget is four million dollars. The AES budget is four million dollars and the town budget is four million dollars. We currently have two referendum votes. We have the RAM budget vote that's in the beginning of May. And then usually a week later, we go to do the town bu, vote. So these are the same registered number of voters. Those are the votes cast. You can sit there and see the percentages for yourself year by year. In twenty twenty-four, we had four point nine five percent of the voters go to the polls to vote on the RAM budget. Now, a week later, we go to the polls again and we do the town budget. We usually get better attendance at the town budget. We end up in double digits. We've exceeded twenty-two percent twice. So we're not the seventy-nine percent of nineteen hundred, we're not the eighty percent of, of nineteen fifty, we're twenty-two percent. Right? The reason for all of these. The reason for all of these issues, all seven, eight, nine and ten, is to consolidate the voting for the budget referendums to one date so that more people show up to vote on the four million dollars for the RAM piece of our budget. And we consolidate that budget, that that referendum vote to include both RAM and the town budget. That's that's what we're trying to do. There's nothing nefarious, there's nothing we're trying to get out there and have some authority or control over. It's just a simple fact that people don't vote and we're making them go twice in a limited amount of time and they don't show up. And it would be much better to have twenty two percent of the people sit there and evaluate the RAM budget at the same time they're evaluating the town budget. All right, so now I'm going to go through the questions and I'm going to tell you what we might be losing by any of these issues, right? Go ahead, Elaine Buchard.
Yes, I I just wanted to point out a lot of the problem with the, I mean, the RAM referendum for the budget was on a Tuesday as our general elections are. Unfortunately, the Andover budget vote was on a Monday and it confused the heck out of people. That's all, that's just what I say, if they can be on the same day, that would be so much better.
Our town budget votes are always on a Tuesday, Elaine, per the charter.
Oh, sorry about that. Which one was on Monday? Was that the municipal election?
The municipal election, yes.
Oh, sorry, we've already taken care of that and doing it on November. Sorry.
Okay, Joanne Hebert, before I get started, go ahead.
Yeah, just because it it does seem to be a theme of wanting the two voting things to happen on the same day. Is there a reason we can't talk to RAM and see why theirs is? I mean, do they have laws and bylaws that they're following, why theirs has to be when it is?
State statute says that the regional budget referendum has to be the Tuesday following the first Monday in May. You can't do anything about that.
Okay, so it's a what statute, Carol? Thank you, what?
It's a state statute, I'll, it's a state statute. I can get the number for you, Joanne, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I know it's a state statute.
I mean, I've often thought it was a problem and I understand the reason for wanting to get them together because we never, you know, no matter how many letters you write to the editor talking about the RAM budget, et cetera. You're right, the voters don't come out, so. Okay, thank you for answering that.
So ballot question seven, and I know there's four different questions that all relate to the same topic, but we were, when we were drafting the questions, we just felt it would be better to sit there and bring forth different questions to change different sections of the charter, but they all interrelate and they all deal with the same thing. So seven, eight, nine and ten. So the first question is question ballot question seven, shall the town charter be revised to begin the town budget process sooner and set earlier deadlines for budget proposal submissions by town departments? Only reason to sit there and and vote yes for this is to speed up the or to push the budget process forward so that we can get the two referendums on the same day. And if you hold your questions till the end, there's one question that has specific issues that you'll want to address. And so this one is a very minor item. Question eight, ballot question eight, shall the town charter be revised to hold the annual town budget meeting in the second week of April instead of in May? Only reason to do this is to line the two referendums up. Ballot question nine is the one where you might have some questions, so we're going to sit there and go through this one. So ballot question nine, shall the town charter be revised to eliminate the quorum requirement for the annual town budget meeting, but not for any special town meeting? So what we're trying to say here is that the budget meeting is going to at least have a minimum of twelve people there because those are the elected officials that will show up. But we have a current quorum and I believe, Carol, the number is twenty five.
Yes.
Twenty five, so twelve, twelve people will be the elected officials. We have a quorum of twenty five, but if we got to twenty four, we wouldn't want the budget not to move to referendum. So this is not anything that we're we we're just trying to to verify that if if the budget goes to town meeting, if we have twenty four people to to show up, that budget after changes are made are go is going to go to referendum. So the issues related to the town charter, everybody's worried about what what does the town budget meeting do? The town budget meeting questions the the budget amounts, has the ability to lower the budget amounts and puts a thumb up, thumbs up or thumbs down. So that means those forty two people that come to the meeting or came to the last meeting had the authority to approve or to put the budget down and send it back to the Board of Finance to redo it. So what did we have to do to try to get this on the same? The referendums on the same day? We did not change the authority of the town meeting to lower a budget line item. The town budget meeting still has the authority to lower a a budget line item. And if a budget item is lowered and it passes through the town to through the town budget meeting, that line item at its reduced rate would then move to the townwide referendum. So all we're doing in this issue is eliminating the true up or down on the budget by the people that attend the town budget meeting. That's it. We're not sitting there saying anything else. You still can lower a line item, you can still try to sit there and and get the votes to sit there and and decrease a line item. The current town meeting, budget meeting has no authority to increase the budget. It can't increase the budget, it can only lower the budget. The goal of this is once we adjourn that meeting, that budget as it's done with the the potentially lowered line items moves to townwide referendum on the same day as the RAM budget reference. That's all we did, that's all the changes that were made. Anybody have any questions related to this?
Real quick, you eliminating the the quorum requirement completely?
Yes, we have to eliminate the quorum requirement completely.
So in essence, one person can show up and vote?
Well, like I said, there would be twelve elected officials that show up.
Just want to point that out.
Yeah, understood, but somebody's got to open the meeting. Liz?
Yeah, so about about that. I guess the point is, and especially when you showed the voting and the turnout from the last slide or two. So, I mean, I've been to many of these meetings and sometimes it's a very big meeting and then sometimes it's very small. So the point of this is the people that get that are there have the ability to make the decision, yea or nay or up or down. But it doesn't hamstring the the process from moving forward if enough towns people don't show. Am I, am I getting that right?
If the if we don't pass this, then the budget fails and it gets pushed back to the Board of Finance for revisions. And the Board of Finance can bring the exact same budget to the next meeting and then somebody packs that budget meeting and and it gets passed. That's what happens, that's how our town works. So, you know, from my standpoint, it's a the town meeting can be packed by whoever has the biggest issue at that time. So the difference from my end, from my standpoint, is if I go to a budget referendum, even though I have two thousand three hundred and eighty nine voters, I have six, six to eight times the number of residents come to cast a ballot on the overall budget. I feel that's not what I want to sit there and see as an elected official. I want to see two thousand three hundred and seventy four people come vote. But we still have two hundred and seventy four people come to vote, which is more than the forty two. And and of the forty two, a minimum of twelve of them are elected officials and probably more because the people that go to that meeting are the people that are elected officials because they feel they have to get there to sit there and and they they want to be part of the process. And so it's just a question of, is it? Is the up and down vote so important for the town meeting? Or is it more important to try to get more people to participate in both budgets referendums? And that's the question. So what what our attempt was, was to sit there and get five hundred and six people to come and vote for the budget and give an up or down appropriately for the entire community. So that that's, that's what this is about, Liz, so. Joanne Ebert?
I can appreciate, you know, the sentiment of getting more people involved. Having been involved the last few years quite, you know, intensely, no matter what we try, you know, the same people or the people that truly care are the people that are going to come here, you know, to to the meetings or to vote. You know, you know, I appreciate the Don Denleys and the Scott Sayad or, you know, people that notoriously really do care and bring points forward. Okay, so that's being said about that, I don't know if that the end result is ever going to be the same, especially when it comes to the RAM budget. Having put a lot of effort into getting some information out there. But we'll see what happens. And then my other point is I really am very afraid of speeding up the process in this town. I feel like having people that are already, you know, Eric himself, who has a lot on his plate, you know, the Public Works Foreman, that's responsible for a big part of the budget, putting things together. Notoriously, each year that we've received budgets at the timeline that we had previous, there's always been things added at the end or things brought to us. I just feel like moving it a whole month sooner is not really allowing the departments to do their due diligence and do a good job at presenting a a budget. I think everyone's very busy. They've got their own tasks to do and this is adding pressure on the town employees that have to present things. That's my opinion.
Catherine DeRozier?
So my opinion is combining the RAM referendum with the town vote is, I think, a wonderful thing to do. I think it'll give people that don't typically vote for the RAM referendum or an opportunity to be there and do it at that time. I think it'll be a better representation of the town of Andover. And secondly, ballot question number nine, it's just eliminating the the quorum requirement. That's all that we really need to discuss here. So instead of having twenty five people, I'm understanding, eliminating that to be who who, you know, whoever shows up plus the representation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance can move the budget to referendum. That's all it is, is the number of people for the quorum requirement.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on ballot question nine? Okay, we're gonna move on to ballot question ten, which is just, you know, the last of these items. So ballot question ten, shall the town charter be revised so that the budget passed by the annual town budget meeting may go straight to referendum on the same day as the Regent Eight School District Budget Referendum? Just to align the two items and the two referendum dates. Anybody have any questions on this item? Okay, I'm gonna move on to item ballot question eleven. Ballot question eleven, shall the town charter be revised to provide the authority to pass ordinances to the Board of Selectmen while authorizing voters to petition to referendum and repeal any ordinance passed by the board before it can become effective? So just so everybody's aware, an ordinance is a piece of legislation enacted by a municipal authority. This question, you know, the Board of Selectmen is, you know, we could pass an ordinance, but we're subject to all the hearing requirements and all the notices and everything else that are is currently within the charter. So we're not going to pass an ordinance in the dark and it's not going to be handled by like that. So we talked about you know, as this was brought up and and it was discussed thoroughly in front of the Charter Revision Commission. So what we we did was we put in a very detailed way of trying to sit there and move an ordinance from passed by the Board of Selectmen to referendum. So there's been some concern as to the language required. The language is fifty signatures, it's fifty signatures or two percent of the voting public. Carol, is that incorrect or not? Just so everybody's aware, it's twenty five people.
That is correct.
Twenty five people, okay. So let's talk about the 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 signature requirements of of of, sorry, fifty people, it's fifty signatures. So let's talk about that, it's not twenty five, my bad, it's fifty people. So the PTA could collect fifty signatures, the Democratic Town Committee could collect fifty signatures, the Republican Town Committee could collect fifty signatures and it's you could all combine to collect signatures. So the way that the repeal process would work is everyone in the town of Andover would have to receive the text related to the ordinance. The ordinance text would be mailed to your house by mailer. The timeline on the collection of the signatures will not start until that mailer is received by the town clerk's office. The town clerk stamps the mailer into receipt and from that point on, everyone in town would have twenty one days to sit there and collect fifty signatures that would send the ordinance to the next referendum, next regularly scheduled referendum. Everything we tried to do here was about efficiency without wasting time, wasting money. If we, if the Board of Selectmen passed an ordinance, that ordinance and it got fifty signatures and it got moved to referendum, it would go to the next election in May or November.
Yeah, Jeff, I just wanted to say it's twenty days, not twenty one.
Twenty days, I'm sorry, I took a day away from everybody, I apologize. So twenty days from the day that it's received by the town clerk's office, not by the day it was passed by the Board of Selectmen or any other arbitrary item, it's when the mailer is received and stamped in by the town clerk's office. So there are plenty of ordinances that we have discussed at the Board of Selectmen and ordinances that we have not passed and not put on any special town meeting because personally, I don't like to call people to special town meetings for items that I don't, I don't, you know, I could, we could sit there and schedule a special town meeting all the time. It's gonna cost the town money, it's gonna have people have to come in and and vote. So we have chosen as a board to to roll up multiple items on any special town meeting. So if you remember the last town meeting, we had lot line adjustments that were brought up at the last town meeting. We had issues related to other items on that town meeting. There were probably five or six items on that agenda at that special town meeting because we have ganged all those items off. Eric does a good job of organizing them all and they're all brought up at the special town meetings and we choose not to call it. So in this situ- situation, it's, you've elected a Board of Selectmen. Most of the Board of Selectmen have received three to five hundred votes from the residents of the town. We're not going to put into effect an ordinance that is negatively impacting a significant number of the town people. But we might sit there and put in an ordinance that sits there and and requires somebody to not walk their dog on the Veterans Memorial Field and allow their dog to defecate on our field without getting fined for that. That would be an ordinance we would put in place, that would be an ordinance that you could get fifty signatures together with. And that would be an ordinance that if you got those fifty signatures, would go to referendum. So if we pass something that was egregious, you put it to referendum and you vote it down. If we pass something that's common sense, you let it move forward. And if you believe that we're doing something better. And if you believe that we're doing something bad, you don't elect us the next time that election comes around. That's that's my take on all this. So Catherine McGoldy Lewis, you were the first one with your hand up.
Hi. Okay, hello. Um, all right. First of all, you you mentioned a couple of things. The first one being that when you're doing this as the Board of Selectmen, you have all these regulations and things that you have to go through to get them, the ordinance there. And those, I think, were put there for exactly that purpose, to make sure that you are that there is a checks and balances and you're doing what you're supposed to do before you put in ordinances. Secondly, um, you love to go to the dog poop one. That's a good one for everybody. But if we use a better one, such as changing when people pay their taxes, that's an ordinance and you guys could pass it anytime. And whether people want to pay their taxes on a different day or annually or daily, whatever you wanted. Um, you are still asking people now to go out, get the form, make sure that form is filled in completely and correctly, otherwise you can just deny it. Then get the fifty signatures in twenty days. Uh, you think it takes nothing to get signatures. That's not true. And um, and and then go through coming to the board. I just I I think that those checks and balances were put there for a reason, and this authority should not be taken away from from the residents of the town. That's it for now.
Okay, Liz.
Um, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, I think uh, um, there's been a lot of criticism, especially in the last Board of Selectmen meeting of, you know, with this whole charter thing about the Board of Selectmen wanting to take over power, blah, 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 blah. And I think um, I I don't think that's a fair assessment, but this question, this one kind of bothers me because it to it may seem like some to someone like you folks who are on these boards and you may know everybody in town getting fifty signatures may not be a problem, but I I think I think that's problematic. If somebody sees eh, and I'm not even sure how often a new ordinance comes into play. It may not even be that big of a deal, but it's the optics. The optics looks like, okay, you guys can make this decision. And then all you have to, all you taxpayers have to do is, you know, oppose it, collect your fifty signatures, blah, blah. So I I just, I just think the fifty signature thing is a stickler for me. Um, and I wish there was just a different way to handle this. Um, so for me, uh, yeah, I'm 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 not a fan of this particular one. Uh, I guess, uh, that's all I can say. I'm not a fan of this particular one. I get what you're trying to say. I get your try, what you're trying to do, but it it does look like optic wise, probably doesn't look as good for the Board of Selectmen, even though I know that's not what your attention is.
Okay, Shannon Love?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to comment that the change that you're proposing to the charter is not only about ordinances. And I didn't see any question that talks about the other part of or parts of the revision, one of which is that would give solely the Board of Selectmen the authority to create, consolidate, modify, or abolish permanent board, commission, department, or agency, not otherwise provided for in the charter. Um, which is almost as concerning to me as the proposition about the ordinance. Um, I have a similar concern that many of the questions about the budget are very oversimplistic as far as the significant changes um that are going to be made to the process by the proposed charter changes. So I'll give you an example. Um, because I don't think any one of the questions affects this, Jeff. Which ballot question necessitates the new eight O T D? Which replaces the Board of Finance budget hearing with a joint Board of Selectmen Board of Finance meeting at which the presence of just three selectmen would constitute a quorum? There are a number of questions on the ballot that don't match up with or don't fully explain um the very significant changes that are being made specifically to the budget process and the involvement of the Board of Selectmen in addition to the Board of Finance, in addition to the Town Administrator in the budget process. So specifically, I'm concerned that the questions don't match up with the the proposed changes that are being made um, to the charter. And that to me is is really disingenuous to try to put those questions out and then change the charter in ways um, that aren't questioned on the ballot.
Shannon, I I would I would just tell you that that's not the intent. There's nothing in there that's sitting there. We're trying to hide anything in the questions.
Yes, I'm not accusing you of the intent. I'm not accusing the intent.
Shannon, Shannon, I understand it. But I'm just telling you, these questions, you can read the entire charter. All of these questions are trying to line up. They were, they were prepared and reviewed by the entire Charter Vision Commission. We attempted to sit there and do the best possible job we can. If we didn't line it up exactly, that's that's okay. I mean, for me, I I mean, I'm just telling you the reality of what we're trying to get done and accomplished. And we're talking about on this question, the issue related to passing ordinances. I I refer back for everyone to the number of people that come to a town meeting. So uh, and and this is another question that maybe there is a little bit better way to do it. But this is not something that I I look at for anyone here that I'm sorry, I sit there and I look at fifty signatures and I know Catherine McGoldy Lewis can say no, and she can sit there and you can, we can determine that it's difficult to get fifty signatures. I don't necessarily believe that's the case. I believe that if you really didn't want the Board of Selectmen to pass an ordinance, I guarantee you the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee, depending upon which side of this they were on, would get the fifty signatures. So um.
But Jeff, I mean, I'm just gonna, Jeff, the fifty signatures only applies to the ordinances. It does not apply to the creation, modification, abolition, or whatnot of town boards and agencies. So you didn't address the question.
Name one board or agency that has not noted within the charter that we would abolish. Give me one.
I don't need to do that, Jeff. It gives you their ability.
You, it's got to be an un, it's can't be named in the charter. Name one.
No, but you can modify the boards, Jeff. You can create new boards, Jeff, that take away the powers of existing agencies.
It is not named in the charter.
Okay, Jeff. The fact of the matter is, is
Something you want to sit there and put it out in public, please name something, show the public what we could do that is wrong. And I'm okay with it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you to try to 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 create a problem. Asking you to name one of the boards not named in the charter that the Board of Selectmen would and could abolish.
Committee for Public Safety. You could create a committee for public safety. You could create another committee that takes away some of the powers of an existing committee, Jeff. It simply says you can't affect the boards and committees that are named in the charter. You can create or modify any of the committees or commissions. And that, the my my problem with that, Jeff, is not just that fact, but it's the fact that the question that supposedly deals with this issue isn't even on the ballot. All it says is discussion of ordinances. It doesn't say anything about this additional power that is gonna come solely to the Board of Selectmen.
It is because those town board and agencies have to be, you know, created or 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 abolished by ordinance. So it's all in the same issue. It's all about an ordinance. So if we sit there and created an ordinance to establish a new agency or a new board, we'd have to create an ordinance and you would sit there and and sit there and object to that ordinance and you would sit there and go through the process. That's what this is about. This is not a special power that hides in the background that we're sitting there attempting to do. If if the Board of Selectmen wanted to um, abolish uh, an agency, we'd have to create an ordinance. We'd have to go through the process. We'd write the ordinance. We'd sit there and 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 you'd be able to go into public speak, Shannon, and you'd be able to sit there and and object to it. And then and then if the Board of Selectmen passed that and and sent out the notice to the community, you would be able to collect fifty signatures and put it on the ballot. That's the issue. It's it's not something that's sitting in the background. It's not. It's an ordinance.
Well, let me, let me jump in here, Shannon. Um, the language that you're talking about that you find objectionable had to be changed. There already was existing language talking about these um unnamed uh, commissions or 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 organizations. And this language had to be changed in order to stay consistent with the change in the ordinance language that is being described in ballot question eleven. This is not a separate power. This is taking the existing language and making it so that it remains consistent with the larger body of the 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 charter. This isn't a a separate power that that's being granted. This, there already was authority to the Board of Selectmen. If you look at what's being being struck out. And the change in that language is just so that the entire, the entire document is internally consistent.
Okay. So I don't know, I'm I'm just gonna ask this because Jeff, you're going question by question. And I don't see this addressed by any of the questions. So you're asking me what additional powers or what additional things. So I'm gonna give you an example. Two all new sections of eight O two, the duties on the budget were created. One of them is that the Town Administrator can comment and make recommendations on the budget requests made by various departments, offices, and agencies. And the Board of Education is noted by definition as an agency of the town. Where is that in any of the questions that are on the ballot? Because that's a whole new authority for the Town Administrator. That's question one. Question two. Somehow, there's now going to be a proposed, if this goes through, again, not a question on the ballot, but a question to deal with the budget or new powers under the budget. Supposed to be joint meetings of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to conduct business about the budget. Somewhat, I think, taking away the power of the Board of Finance. So my whole point here is that the questions, which I know were thoroughly reviewed and everything, and frankly, there are probably way too many questions and way too many issues that you're asking the electorate to dress. And that's a whole problem here. But you've granted by virtue of the proposed questions, new authority to the Town Administrator and to the Board of Selectmen that aren't covered by any of the questions on the ballot. And that's my primary concern tonight. Thank you.
Okay, um, I would sit there and go, the reason why, and again, I go back to the same issue, to do these items, the Board of Selectmen would have to create an ordinance to abolish or create an agency. Um, going to your question of powers granted to the town, to to the administrator in the budget process. The Town Administrator creates the budget, puts the budget together and presents that budget to the Board of Finance who approves that budget. So I don't understand and and I don't want to get into a long dissertation because Shannon, vote no, and I'm okay with
Already did. Thank you.
It's good. Vote no. And I would tell you the Town Administrator does all that work. So to be able to ask any agency, including the Board of Education, for information that assists in preparing that budget, I don't understand where that becomes problematic.
Because he does not currently have the authority, Jeff, to make recommendations to the Board of Education. That's why.
Agency for information. So you're telling me and you're telling me the Board of Education will not provide information to the Town Administrator to
That's not what it says, Jeff. Read the language. Here, I'll read it. The Town Administrator made comments and made recommendations on the budget requests made by various agencies, which includes the Board of Education. He has no authority now to make recommendations on our budget requests by law, by statute, by charter.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, anybody? Stephen King?
Well, I'm just gonna echo some of the sentiments of the young ladies before me that, uh, you know, obviously this puts a lot of power within the Board of Selectmen. Um, and you prefaced this discussion by note noting a drop in attendance. That drop in attendance speaks volumes as far as trying to get people involved in just getting signatures. Um, the timeline is narrow and uh, I think severely limits the recourse, you know, for the residents uh, uh, in a situation where something is passed that uh, um, just is just not in the good, the best interest of the town.
Okay. And I'll tell you why I believe the town meeting had had less attendance in the last cycle. And that is because the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and the Board of Education have all done a much better job of trying to be as transparent as they possibly can be. And there were no major issues addressed that everybody was sitting there and had had was up in arms over. So I believe that the town meeting didn't generate any controversy in the last go round. The times before, when there was a little bit higher uh, participation in those town meetings, there was controversy generated by one or more issues that were out there. So I would tell you that the last meeting uh, of the town meeting didn't have very much participation because personally, I think we've done a very good job. And the issue that I'm trying to address is, I'm trying to get it away from the town meeting of up or down and just get the five hundred residents that will actually show up and vote to get a more democratic process out there and more people, you know, voting on all of the budgets that we have to pass. So that includes RAM and includes the town budget.
Understood. My my, the focus of my point was that the narrow window uh, uh, for a petition to referendum. That that is of uh, greatest concern.
Everybody would have a minimum of two to three months of of anybody participating, anybody that comes to a meeting and sits there and, you know, a eh, something at the Board of Selectmen doesn't happen within one meeting. Very rarely ever does happen within one meeting. It's usually, and especially in ordinance would be a process because we'd have to sit there and express what we wanted to do with the ordinance. We'd have to have it written by the town attorney. We would then have to get it back and and send it out as a public notice and have a public hearing. So it's not a small window and it's not a tiny window. The twenty days is after the two thousand three hundred and sixty-eight residents get their their notice that here is the potential proposed uh, ordinance by the Board of Selectmen.
The reality is it could happen at one meeting. That's my point.
Again, it can't because it has to go to public hearing. So Catherine McGoldy Lewis.
Hi, um, my issue again with this is the fact that, and I agree with Shannon, I'm sorry, but I do, that you are taking a lot of the responsibility from the town residents, or the authority from the town residents, and giving it to the Board of Selectmen. And that's not what town meeting, that that's not the town meeting form of government that we have. And I don't think that you can, you can say, you're right, there's been a lot of good things that everyone's done. And perhaps that has led to less people coming out. But I would also say that the local government here doesn't do a really good job of letting everybody know what's going on and trying to get people involved. And even when we want to get someone uh, to volunteer, because we need somebody on a specific board, all you do is put, I I I see it in the paper. There's an opening on such and such board. You don't say what the board does, how many times does it meet, what it's there for, what is supposed to ha- happen, nothing. There's nothing to entice people to get together and try to come in. It's just is, here it is. There's an opening. So if people knew more about what was going on, I think you'd get more people to come out.
Okay. Bob Hamburger?
I think there's an important part of this that that needs to be brought out that uh, folks, folks may be missing. So if the Board of Selectmen passes an ordinance and the mailer goes out, that twenty day period, the ordinance is held in abeyance. It does not go into effect until the end of that twenty day period. And if the petitions, the 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 fifty signatures are collected and submitted within that twenty day period, it never goes into into effect until uh, a referendum is held. And that twenty day period is not
And that twenty day period is not a do or die kind of thing. If if the Board of Selectmen passes an ordinance, that ordinance goes into effect and the public at any point after that decides, we don't like this. Collect fifty signatures, submit it. Again, the ordinance gets suspended until the next referendum is held. So this isn't a do or die kind of thing. And this kind of language was insisted upon by several members of the the Charter Revision Commission. When we talk about checks and balances, we wanted to make sure that there was an accessible, ongoing, open-ended way of reversing what the Board of Selectmen might have passed. And I don't I don't think that has been has been presented adequately.
Okay. I'm confused. Liz?
Sorry, I don't I don't want to belabor this, but maybe a simple question, maybe this would help. How were ordinances approved prior to this? I don't have the original charter in front of me. How how were they approved before? Could maybe maybe that be answered?
Sure, they would go in front of a a special town meeting. So forty-two residents, including twelve elected officials, would sit there and up or down on a town ordinance. It's either that or, you know, you allow the Board of Selectmen to do it. And if you don't like what the ordinance is, you sit there and gather fifty signatures and it goes for referendum. So the original way is it would go to a town meeting. Biata?
Yes, Jeff, did you say there was a cost associated with the meetings and referendums? And can you share with us what that is?
Well, I believe that we were talking about this on Friday and I believe the number was somewhere between, you know, five hundred and a thousand dollars for town meeting, but Carol Lee would be much better about a town meeting as far as the overall cost of that. But the reason why, and one of the things Biata is, we're not doing a special referendum. What we talked about is to be as efficient and as open as possible is if the signatures were collected and everything was approved, it would go to the next general election within town. So there would be no extra cost related to the referendum timeline. It would just be the cost of the special town meeting. So Carol, if or Eric, either one of you that has a basic number for the community.
Have to send a mailer out and that is anywhere between three and four hundred dollars depending on size of it. And then the cost of I believe the registrars or deputy registrars salary. That was said.
So the hourly cost that we're paying for the employees to come and participate and check off the the names of the individuals that come to vote.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this issue? Okay. We're gonna move to item twelve. Ballot question twelve, shall the town charter be revised to increase the minimum dollar amount to require special town meeting approval for bonding or other forms of financing to a figure exceeding fifty thousand dollars for any repayment term of more than one year? This question increases the threshold from ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. Any questions on this topic? This is really meant to just be more efficient and eliminate the need to call a special town meeting or something that might be a copier lease, something along that lines. Okay, no questions. I'm gonna move on to ballot question thirteen. Ballot question thirteen, shall the town charter be revised to increase the minimum amount to require special town meeting approval for any grant of financial aid from any source to a grant that requires the town to provide a local match of twenty-five thousand dollars or more? The current threshold for a special town meeting for the amount of money that a town would need to put into a grant is currently one dollar. So we're moving that to twenty-five thousand dollars. So what this is saying is if we receive a grant that requires a twenty percent contribution and that is a a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant and we're gonna we're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars from a state, federal or philanthropic organization. The town could sit there and apply and and accept a grant that requires us to put in twenty-five thousand dollars or less. If it's greater than twenty-five thousand dollars, we need to go to a special town meeting. Any questions on that item? Okay. Everybody's tired now. All right, ballot question fourteen, shall the town charter be revised to increase the minimum amount requiring special town meeting approval to any proposed supplemental appropriation of one percent or more of the current town budget? The current threshold for that is point zero zero five. So we're looking to increase that to point zero one. That's basically, and the way that this is calculated is it's point zero zero five of the AES Board of Education budget and the town operating budget. It does not include RAM. So it's point zero zero five of those two components, basically eight million dollars. So it's moving that threshold from forty thousand dollars to eighty thousand. Any questions on that item? Stephen King?
I'm I'm just curious how often this has hampered you, say, within the past two years?
Has not. Because I wouldn't sit there and we would normally deal with this during the budget process. But there are certain situations where we may run into something and we might want to get it done out of our current operating budget or our fund balance. And this would just allow other boards of selectmen to be able to sit there and deal with a different threshold. Any other questions on this one? Okay. Question fifteen, ballot question fifteen. Shall the town charter be revised to provide that any proposed supplemental appropriation that exceeds two point five percent of the current town budget or approximately two hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, whichever is greater, must be sent directly to a referendum vote? So this question is specifically related to the town mower that was just approved at the last town meeting. So this is one of the items that was on the last town meeting that we had. We had an opportunity to purchase a mower. And that mower, because of the limited inventory that's out there and available, a decision was made to sit there and put the town mower in the budget for the current year. Normally that, but that would have went on the budget for the following year and we would have paid it, but we needed to get it done in the current year. And we had a significant number of people come to the meeting. It got passed. It was a fairly tight vote, but it did get passed. And it's a it was a lease. So it wasn't as if we paid two hundred and twenty or two hundred and five or two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the mower all at once. It's a five-year lease, but it was a member of the Charter Revision Commission that really wanted to make sure that that type of expenditure that didn't just sit there and go to town meeting, that it was required to go to townwide referendum. So a greater number of people would vote on it. So normally, those types of items would happen during the budget vote. They wouldn't be special appropriations and and we wouldn't sit there and try to do a supplemental appropriation for something like that. This was in an odd circumstance. It's the only time it's ever happened in the time I've been on the Board of Selectmen. But the member of the the Charter Revision Commission was not happy that the vote of the town meeting came out that way. And so they requested that it go directly to referendum so that more people would get to vote on it. So I see Liz, you have a question?
Yes, so this is for items greater than two hundred thousand dollars. Right?
Yes.
What was it before?
Oh, we would never go to special. We would never go to a referendum.
Was was there a dollar figure before the two hundred thousand dollar dollar figure?
It was one of the dollar figures that we would have had in here. So, you know, this would be a special time. So it'd be forty grand. So it would be related to this number. We took this this ballot question fourteen is point zero zero five percent or forty thousand dollars. So if we were trying to make a supplemental appropriation of greater than forty thousand dollars, which we were, we had to go to a special town meeting, which we did. And then the mower got approved. So what what is being stated and what the Charter Revision Commission is saying is anything in excess of two hundred thousand dollars should not just be voted on by the town meeting. Because in reality, there's a limited number of people that vote that go to these town meetings. They have an 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 amount of authority to to push things forward. And to be really honest, the town meeting and in the past has been packed by the side that wants something done for themselves. And that's just the reality of our our form of government related to the town meeting. So what this is about is this is about trying to move something of that great an expense that is off the budget cycle to move it to a townwide referendum. And that that's the thought. Because in reality, if something came up that was greater than two hundred thousand dollars currently and it was for the benefit of one of the town agencies that really wanted to see it pass, they would pack the town meeting and get it.
Okay, so how do we know what would be allowed for this sort of appropriation? I mean, anything under two hundred thousand dollars could kind of slip through?
Would be a truck. No, it it still comes down to, we'd still have to go to town meeting on anything in excess of eighty thousand dollars.
In excess of eighty thousand dollars?
Right. Yeah. Because ballot question fourteen and ballot question fifteen relate in certain ways. The ballot question fourteen relates to what's the threshold to do a supplemental appropriation and to sit there and have it go in front of a town meeting or not. So ballot question fourteen is the current threshold is forty thousand dollars. It would move to eighty thousand dollars if it was an item of need and 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 understand this still and and Eric, correct me, I'm wrong, or 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 Carol, still needs Board of Finance approval. Like, we didn't sit there and the Board of Selectmen didn't just send the mower to town meeting without Board of Finance approval.
That is correct. It was approved for purchase by CIP and then the Board of Selectmen and then the Board of Finance and then it went to town meeting.
Okay, so from from this standpoint, that even if we wanted to do this, even if we wanted to spend eighty thousand dollars, the current form of government, the current form of government is that the Board of Finance still needs to approve that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Can I point out one other thing that's just a technicality? Is that these are cumulative. So this means in any given year, all supplemental appropriations in total have that threshold on them. This is not for an individual thing. This is collective throughout that budget cycle. What is allowed?
All right, Liz, are you done?
Um. Now I'm not so sure. Now you flip back to question fifteen because question fifteen is what I was looking at when I asked the question. And then you went back to fourteen and I'm like, wait, what happened to the two hundred thousand dollars?
Because you asked me what the current threshold is.
So it was.
It is. It is forty thousand dollars currently for certain appropriations.
Okay.
And as Eric pointed out, it's cumulative. So so well, let's walk through what we did with the the mower. So the mower was brought up in front of of Public Works and the town administrator asked for this to be evaluated. CIP evaluated it and said it's a good idea. It then went to the Board of Selectmen and we sat there and said it was a good idea. It then went in front of the Board of Finance and they sat there and said, okay, we agree with it also. It then had to go to a town meeting, which we had. We had the one meeting, which was ganged up, lot line adjustments, everything else. And the town meeting voted on this. And so that was done at that special town meeting. If we had items so anything over forty thousand dollars, this threshold on question fourteen was gonna have to go to a special meeting. The town mower, even with the new threshold, would have had to go to town meeting. And actually, it wouldn't go to town meeting now if we vote for this. It would go directly to referendum. This is a very odd. This is a very odd item. I would sit there and tell you that so I've been on the board about ten years. This is the first time we ever chose to deal with anything like this. This would normally go through the budget cycle. It was very.
It would still, okay, it would still go to referendum. It wouldn't necessarily need a special town meeting is what you're saying. Okay, gotcha.
Right.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Joanne Ebert is up next.
Sorry, I just wanted to add on to having been involved in it that it, you know, was presented to the Board of Finance as being a very the reason it didn't, like you said, the normal process is to go through budgeting year to year and it should have been anticipated beforehand and been included in a future budget or the present budget. But it was presented that it was, you know, a specialized item that if we didn't, if we waited, it wouldn't be available. So all of those circumstances, but it does bring up the thought, you know, I'm a little leery of some of the ballot questions just because of the cumulative effect of everything that Eric brought up. But that that's what happened. The hope hopefully the hope is that people budget accordingly so that there's not additional appropriations, you know, made to the taxpayers that have already passed a budget.
Well, just just to clarify that. This this was, the mower was two hundred thousand dollars financed over five years. It was fifty thousand dollars that would be in the Department of Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. So what we had to, what was done in the request and the reason why it was made was because there was limited inventory on those mowers. And if we waited till the beginning of the next fiscal year and went through our budgeting process, we would not have been, we would not have had availability to buy that mower. So it was a first come, first served thing for the dealer that had the mower and that was the choice that was made. But it was only fifty thousand dollars. And then and then the next fifty thousand dollars was in the budget cycle for the following year. But because it's cumulative total, that's what had to happen.
Thank you.
Shannon. One second, Shannon. Go ahead.
Just as a clarification, under the current budget, the way it says is leases or lease options to which the town, including the local Board of Education, is a party to, which involve a term of obligation in excess of one year, have to go to special meeting. So currently, if I bought, if I leased something that costs the town one dollar per year, that is technically supposed to go to a town meeting unless it falls under the title of a lease of personality, which means like general office thing. So if Public Works bought a twenty thousand dollar item that they were going to lease over three years, that would automatically go to special meeting under our current system. That's just, I just want to point out what's in our actual charter there.
Shannon?
Yeah, hopefully an easy question. Where does it say what Eric has described as cumulative? I didn't see that anywhere in the Charter or the Charter Revisions.
Okay, that would be item F under three oh four F, which is any appropriation from the Capital Nonrecurring Expense Fund not included in the annual budget, which exceeds one quarter of one percent of the budget as specified. That's what it says now. So right now, that's the way it reads. So right now, that's the way it reads.
Are you looking at it, Shannon? Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm just curious how one would understand or. I'm even looking at it and it refers to section eight oh five B, so you've got to go there. How does that get to the cumulative, Eric? If you can just explain it? In layman's terms, so to speak.
Because it's the total appropriation from the capital and nonrecurring budget.
Well, Shannon, I would sit there and I would go, that's the way that we've interpreted it for the years that I've been on the board. So it's always been a cumulative number.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions related to ballot question fifteen? Okay. Ballot question sixteen. This is just a. Legalese issue. So shall the town charter be revised to delete transition sections ten twelve, ten thirteen and ten fourteen? Which shall be recorded in the Office of the Town Clerk for reference. So. This question is meant to delete sections that were modified by prior Charter Revision Commissions and to simplify the the current document. Anybody have any questions related to this item? Okay. So. I I personally, I want to thank everybody. This is the most uh. Attended meeting that we've had on Zoom, I really believe. Um. Uh, I would tell you that all of the information that we we had here. Is available or will be available on the town website, so um. I would ask. That you sit there and share it with your other residents who weren't here. Hopefully they can come and watch this tape. It's also recorded. It'll be available. So that people who were not available to attend can sit there and come and uh. Get information as to how they uh. Want to answer the ballot questions around there. Apologize that the ballot is so long, but. Uh, it's how we chose to sit there and try to get these questions in a smaller form, but uh. Not one big, long dissertation for each thing. So I personally believe that um. As Louise Goodman said, that we probably should all go to early voting to sit there and. Deal with all of these questions and get them answered. Uh, you can sit there and take the sample ballot and have it filled out beforehand so you know what questions you want to. Answer yes, and hopefully you'll answer yes on all of them because it will make town government more efficient. You you may not, but that's okay. So I can make my pitch for that. Um. Anybody else right now? We're going to move on to uh public speak unless somebody has a question. Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to. I I've been uh taking a look at. Um, this is just to to address some of the things that Shannon said a little earlier. I've been looking at some of the sections. That um she brought up that uh she said, you know, represent additional powers. For the Board of Selectmen um or for the town administrator and that weren't referenced within. Uh, these changes. I mean, she she spoke about section eight oh two, for example, the Board of Finance. May suggest a target for expenditures. And I the the last line there says, however, the target shall not be binding with respect to budget submittals. And similarly. Uh, the town administrator may comment and make recommendations on the budget requests. And Shannon was claiming that these are additional powers. The way that I read that, quite frankly, is. I, as an individual, could go to every Board of Education meeting and do exactly those same things. These are additional responsibilities for the uh for the 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 individuals that are named there. But they are not additional authorities or powers as I read that language. So Shannon, you and I can take this offline and and discuss this, but this is this is how I see. Uh, the the language that that you think is is granting unenumerated powers.
All right. Any other questions related to the ballot questions before we move to public speak? Okay. So um. There's nothing that's going to get done at this meeting. No motions, no votes, no nothing like that, but we're going to move to item four, public speak. Uh, Catherine McGoldy Lewis.
Hi, um, one of the things I had asked at that meeting. Was why we couldn't. Put the language, update the language. In the charter and. Have language that's. Twentieth, let alone twenty first century. And take out most legalese and take the. Which, by the way, I spent a year of my life doing, and it wasn't easy, but it was worth doing. And take maybe a things that are over a paragraph that could be. Done in three sentences. And I don't know why we're not willing to do that. I don't understand it. Because people shouldn't have. If this is the document to help the people of the town govern the town. I don't understand why it shouldn't be in clear, concise language.
All right, thank you. Um, Bob Hamburger.
Uh, can you come back to me? I'm still thinking about. I have something to say, but come back to me in in a few people.
Joanne Ebert.
Jeff, did you call me? Joanne?
Joanne, sorry.
Okay, yep, um, I'm not. I've already said quite a bit during the night, so I won't say too much. Um, I just am very concerned with the timeline. Of moving. The budget preparation. All of the town departments. Our town administrator. You know, they all have daily jobs to do and tasks to do, and it may sound easy and I understand. Hoping to get all those additional voters out. I would love it too. I'd love to see a lot more voting for the RAM referendum. Um, I just feel like we're putting way too much pressure on everybody to prepare the documents. Double check it, make sure it's correct, and then present it to the Board of Finance or whatever the process, you know. Needs to do um, just too much of a change. Thank you.
Okay, um. I'm going to call on Scott Persson because we didn't have a normal meeting. So Scott, would you like to say anything?
Jeff, I heard enough.
Okay. Philip Povey.
Yeah, I'm good. I appreciate um all the comments uh comments and conversations, so thank you very much.
Elaine Bucart.
Yeah, I just um. I just want to thank you for doing this meeting. Really appreciate it. And um, like you said, it's been recorded, so it's going to go out there so people can go ahead and check into it. I know that the people who are doing early voting. Uh. Just about all of them knew we were having this meeting tonight, decided, nope, we're just going to get it done. So that's okay. Um, but thank you very much. For this.
From Shannon Lawden.
Thanks also. Um, I just want to thank you for having this meeting and also say. That I encourage everybody who's on this meeting and others who are going to vote. On these very important charter revisions to actually look. At the charter revisions that are being proposed. Because as I tried to make clear. I think there are very oversimplistic. Explanations about very significant changes. Being made, especially to the budget process. That I don't think the questions on the ballot accurately reflect. And having voted today and having looked at all the questions. Previously, I've made comments to that effect for a while, but. Um, now it's here. And it's on the ballot. And please, please. Review act the actual changes uh that are being posed because there's a lot more than the questions actually reflect. Thanks.
Okay, Eric Anderson.
I'm good.
Steve Willard.
Just thanks, Jeff, and thanks to the uh recent Charter Revision Committee for for putting all this together. Thank you.
Right, Jerry Kerme. Or Ann Kerme.
Hi. It's me and um. I really feel the same way as Shannon did. I think there's a lot of changes. That are in that. Old document. And the questions do not clearly reflect that. There's so many details that are being changed. And I'm not happy with the question. That's it.
Thank you. Michael Sinkowitz.
All set. Thank you.
Catherine Hutchinson.
I have nothing to say additionally. Thank you.
Carol Lee.
All set. Thank you.
Dave Castanian.
Uh, I just wanted to thank the Charter Revision Committee and the Selectmen. I think there was a lot of information. I think it was pretty clear and I appreciate all the hard work everybody's done. Thanks.
Thank you. Beata Gdamski.
Thank you to everyone who has taken the time to work on this and thank you for. Uh, giving us the opportunity to ask these questions and to bring this information to us. That's all.
Leanne Hutchinson.
No, thank you.
Okay, Stephen King.
I'll echo the uh support for the work the committee did. Um, obviously you can't please everybody. Um, I see positive in some of the um uh language. Uh, there's a number of things I disagree with, but uh. Thanks again for the effort and uh appreciate the work you do.
Kathleen Weigert.
Um, thank you for the meeting. It was very informative. Um, I think y'all did a wonderful job and I think this meeting was very informative. My only concern is is I truly believe that a lot of the individuals who are going to vote on these aren't really going to understand what they're voting on. And I think some of them may may not pass just because. Of lack of understanding, which is unfortunate. Thank you.
Liz Lowkutch.
Oh, I think I've. I think I've said enough. Thank you all. Appreciate you and um. Yeah, good luck.
All right, Diane Granier.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, I'd just like to add add my thanks to uh everybody that made this happen. A good meeting. Uh, Jeff, you always um conducted a good meeting. I'm happy with that. I hope there's no minimum. Um, number of voters that have to answer those questions in order for it to pass because I think most, you know. John and Jane Doe out there, when they look at that fourteen, fifteen questions, it's just going to roll their eyes. They're. They're not going to understand what what this is all about and are just going to skip the questions. Um, which I think is really unfortunate, and I don't know what more you could have done. To get people informed as to what this is all about. Um, but again, when I looked at that ballot and I, you know, my eyes just. Rolled around in my head. Um, and I'm I'm sure that most people are just. Not not even going to bother answering. So I hope there's no minimum number um of people that have to answer all those questions. So. That's it, but good job, good try. Um, I wish you all the best of luck with it. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for presenting this information and for the productive dialogue. Um. And to everyone who had comments, I appreciate everyone being so engaged in the process and. And respectful throughout it. So thanks.
Okay, I think um. We'll go back up to Bob Hamburger.
I just wanted to thank you, Jeff, for all of your input, not only as. You know, uh, for selectmen, but also your work on on the commission. Um, a week and a half ago, there was a letter to the uh the River East in which your name and mine. Were mentioned side to side and I I hope the letter writer uh. Understands that I appreciated that. I appreciate being uh being named in the same context as you for all the work that you've done here. And uh also in a in a follow up letter last week, there was a different writer. Who said that hell must have frozen over because he agreed with the first writer and the two of them have diametrically opposing viewpoints. Uh, quite frankly, I view this as as a mark of success. Uh, if we can get different people with the town who come from different perspectives to agree. Now, they agreed to, I think, vote things down, so I don't know how successful this all is. But uh, you know, this this really has been an exercise in compromise, which is what what politics is. And uh, you know, I've been enthusiastic about it. I hope everyone realizes I'm enthusiastic about the process and uh. Even at this meeting, there were, I argued for some things which I might not necessarily have agreed with, but I agree wholeheartedly with uh. The the review and revision process as as I said uh. To the reporter at River East a couple of weeks ago when he interviewed me, this is democracy in action and um. I'm pleased and and proud to be a part of it and uh. I want to again thank everybody that was on the commission, everybody on the board of selectmen. Uh, this is a complicated and uh challenging assignment that we all took on and uh. You know. It's up to the voters at this point. So thanks again.
Right. I don't think I missed anyone, but if I did. Did I? Okay, so um I I want to echo a couple of thoughts. I want to echo Kimberly's thoughts. I I really appreciate everybody. Um, participating in the meeting, even if we uh disagree, it was it was done in in an appropriate manner. Um. I I I really do enjoy that about um these these meetings when you can have uh some disagreement. But uh you're done. You do it respectfully. I think that's great. And um I'll go to Bob's point. Um, I actually take the fact that Don Denley. A far right Republican. And Scott Soiet, a far left Democrat. Sat there and and believed that these issues are inaccurate. I I feel that is a a win. Because that means that we're driving the bus right down the middle of the field. And we're trying to do this in the most respectful and appropriate manner fashion. So. I I actually think that's a win. And whenever my friend Don Denley can criticize me, he he takes advantage of it and that's okay. Uh, but. I think the the issues that the Charter Revision Commission went to address are issues that. Were appropriate. They were. They were measured. We we had very good discussions on that committee back and forth and attempting to try to uh. Allow for the most, especially on the ordinance issue. I think we went forward to try to give the most opportunities for people to sit there and and have an opportunity to uh. Disagree with the Board of Selectmen's choices and to give them the opportunity to sit there and and force uh an ordinance to to referendum. So. Um, thank you very much for everybody. However you vote is how how you vote. This is more informational as much as possible. And uh, I thank you for your time. So. I think we're we're all done. Um, we're going to adjourn. We don't really need to vote for it, but thank you very much for everyone attending. It was a it was a great meeting. All right, bye bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.